Good afternoon, Mr. Taylor, would you close that door for us? Good afternoon, everyone. We're happy to have all of you here with us on this evening. Would you bow your heads for a word of prayer, please? Eternal God our Father, we thank you for your many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for this day. Thank you for keeping us safe. Continue to bless Orangeburg and continue to keep us safe and remember all our citizens in this city. Give us the wisdom and knowledge how to lead in God this city. In your name we pray. Amen. Again, I want to thank all of you for being here on tonight. Our first order of business here, item number one is the consideration of January 7th, 2025 City Council Minutes.
Move of passage.
Motion been made by Mr. Strowman.
Second.
Motion by second by Councilman Grievous. All in favor? Any opposed? I have the motion as carried. We have another item, consideration of January 17th, 2025 Special City Council Minutes.
Move for passage.
Motion has been made by Dr. Kalu.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knott. All in favor? Any opposed? I have the motion as carried. Our, our item here is our recognition by the character, community of character, the recognition of February community of character trait. And the trait is reliance. And it, and reliance means is the capacity to withstand or to recover quickly from difficulties. And we asking all our citizens to adopt this character trait for the, for the month of February. Thank you. We have two appearances tonight. We have Ms. Crystal Darby. She will come to us speaking on Choose Healthy Life, South Carolina. So Ms. Darby, we're gonna ask you to come to the podium, please. State your name and address and let us know who you with.
My name is Crystal Darby. My address is 117 Halifax Circle, Orangeburg, South Carolina, 29115. It's the City Council, Mayor Butler, Administrator Irving. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I am, along with my colleague Marcia Gunter, we are certified health navigators with Choose Healthy Life, South Carolina. Choose Healthy Life has a presence in many states. They came upon a proposal through the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare to help get our citizens of South Carolina insured. The proposal was prepared stating that in South Carolina, there was a total of 69,000 uninsured African Americans. Through those efforts, the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare approved the proposal to Choose Healthy Life, and they partnered with Charity Missionary Baptist Church in North Charleston, South Carolina. Choose Healthy Life is a faith-based nonprofit organization that focuses on healthy life for all citizens. We came here this evening to make you all aware and ask for your help in just getting the word out. There were nine churches selected across South Carolina in the counties including Allendale, Bamberg, Barnwell, Beaufort, Charleston, Colliton, Darlington, Dorchester, Greenville, Hampton, Lexington, Orangeburg, Richland, and York. Within those counties, nine churches were selected to help with this grant. Victory Tabernacle is one of those churches. Marcia and I attend those churches. We became certified and we have been hitting the ground running to help get our citizens, citizens insured. There are 4,600 African Americans uninsured in Orangeburg County. That is 61.3% of our population. Our goal is to help alleviate some of the health disparities that we face in Orangeburg County. The reason that we have a lot of those health disparities, one, we don't have health insurance. Two, we can't afford it. So if we can come together to help our citizens become insured, hopefully we can bring down some of those numbers. This project is through the Affordable Care Act, and the insurance would be through many providers listed in the healthcare marketplace. So again, we are asking for your help to get the word out. We have flyers that we could give you. All we need is help spreading the word. Let us come talk to your networks. Let us come to your churches. Let us come to your meetings that you're having. Any type of events that you're having, we will come and speak and we'll take it from there. And if we don't have the answer, we can find someone that will. Thank you so much for the opportunity and for your time.
Ms. Darby, it may be, do anybody have any questions?
You have flyers.
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You have flyers ready today?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Alright, well, thank you because we really need to get the word out.
Thank you.
Ms. Darby, thank you for your presentation. Why do you think is the hindrance? Why our folks are not getting the, you know, the insurance? Even low-income people may not even pay for the Medicare, Medicaid. Yeah. What do you think is the problem? And yet, most of them come to the hospital? Especially the ED. Why do you think is the problem?
There are several factors that could be the problem. One, they're not aware of programs that are available. There are a lot of people that consider themselves private, you know, because we have a lot of injuries don't wanna talk to us, right? They don't wanna share their information. And two, what we found, there are some programs, for example, like the Family Health Center. You know, if someone can go there and get approved for that sliding fee, you know, they'd some rather pay that than to get a health insurance plan. Even though we have plans that range that start at $0 per month, some just don't want to do it. So that's why we're here. We wanna bring awareness first and foremost to let them know that there are options for them.
Yeah, I think, I think your project is, you know, is really nice because what we see at the hospital is that most of the time, the patients come in at the late stage of the problem. So now you have to put more effort in trying to, let me use the word, resuscitate the patient. And it becomes difficult because I have to really, you know, go beyond to try to help that patient. And that makes it difficult, you know? Thank you. I think we have, you know, we really need to do something about it, especially for, for the African Americans.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Again, thank you for your presentation. You said that we have some staggering numbers here.
Right.
Affordability is perhaps one of the issues. So do you offer plans that would be affordable for this population of uninsured?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yes.
And have you partnered with any other organizations in Orangeburg to try to get the word out?
Mm-hmm. We've partnered with several churches. We've spoken to the NAACP. We've partnered with them. We showed up, you know, we actually joined the NAACP so that we were more in the know. And then we have some other collaborations that we're currently working on.
Ms. Darby, does the hospital know about your organization?
No, they don't. We are going there, but the Family Health Center knows about us. We've been there.
I think they need to reach out to the hospital too because we have a community project manager down there that will also work with you.
Yes, sir. Will do. Thank you.
Yeah, in rural, rural health, South Carolina as well, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darby. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Quite an interesting presentation. Thank you. When I look at TV and I see the people be talking about getting insurance, getting insurance, call his number, call his number. I look at the billboards something down the highway, the signs. You all are doing the same thing that they're doing?
It depends on which signs you're talking about. There are other organizations that are working on the same type of grant, but maybe through another organization. Yes, sir.
Okay, and can a person, as you give your address, can a person walk physically into your facilities and?
They can walk physically into the church. Yes, sir.
46th Church.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any more questions or concern for Ms. Darby? Thank you very much, Ms. Darby. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Did you have anything, Ms. Marcia? Okay. Okay. Thank you. At this time, we're gonna have Ms. Gail Jarvis and Mr. Johnny Abraham. They have some DPU concerns. And Ms. Jarvis, we want you and Mr. Abraham to come to the podium, state your name and your address.
You get two and a half minutes each. You get five minutes.
No, you get yours and he get his. Yes?
Yes, good evening to everyone. My name is Gail Jarvis. Address 807 Haven Drive, Orangeburg, South Carolina, 29118. And I think the concerns that I have, along with others that I have spoken to, is that we had a drastic increase in our DPU bills this past month. Not sure if you all did, but we did. And they were astronomical. I mean, to go from 200 plus to almost, some families, and I just spoke with a lady, a 93-year-old just now, who had a bill of about $900. Okay, a lot of seniors had $800, et cetera. I did contact DPU. Of course, they had their representation. They were saying that the City Council has the determination on the rates. And of course, in my conversation, the conversation was that DPU recommended rates. But either way, the rates were extremely high. And I think with a time such as this, to have that type of bill to come after the holidays and for those that are disabled, those that are just can maybe afford it, to see such a bill. Mine was almost $300 more than it usually, usually is. And I didn't even have any heat for a week and a half because our heat pump was out. Okay. Our, my, my gas bill, I know there was an increase in both. They told me the electric bill as well as the gas bill. They weren't able to give me the timeframe of the increases. But I know I've been paying my electric bill for years, and this is the first dramatic experience. Yes, we had the holidays, and someone also said, well, you know, we paying for the lights. But someone also said, well, the community doesn't pay for the lights. So we're getting some conflict, you know, information. But the bottom line is, we need some information as to why these bills were so drastically increased, not only for one household, but for many households. It would've been just mine would've been different, but it was astronomical. $200 to $300, even $400 for some persons for one month. And then it wasn't that, the heat was, you know, the cold was here, but it wasn't enough for $300 to $400. So we need to know, was it a glitch? You know, what happened? Would there be any recourse? My mother-in-law bill was almost $800, you know, another elderly person was $800. I mean, to see this type of bill in January, just after Christmas, is astronomical. And it is a concern because we don't know that we're gonna see this again. Was that a one-timer? You know, let us know because that was excruciating, and you have to pay it. And at that time, OK, I did not have any funds. I was resurging. At that time, OK, I did not have any funds. But because of these increases and it's a significant amount of funds that were required, they did open and get some federal funding to assist those that had a need. But we can't look forward to that all the time, you know, so we need some assistance with this. That was, it was just ridiculous, for lack of better words. I don't know, maybe you all did not have the increase in your electric bill, but we did. Okay, and I did that in two minutes.
Okay, Ms. Jarvis, we're gonna let him talk, and then we're gonna let Mr. Harley talk to you.
Right. Yes, because there's some things on here that I don't quite understand, but I'm sure.
It's on.
Yes. My name is Johnny Abraham, and I live in Orangeburg at 217 Madison Street, Orangeburg. And what I'm thinking about is, Gail say exactly what I feel. I feel like the, the light bill went up a little higher this time than it normally is. But I was assuming that it was because of the Christmas lights and everything. But being that I'm a veteran, I can kinda take care of, but I just wanna make notice that I thought it went a little bit too high.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Well, anyway, I just wanna give my little bit opinion on that, that's all.
Okay. We're gonna ask Mr. Harley to speak to that.
Yeah, as soon as they finish, I'll, I'll be happy to.
Well, I'm already finished because, you know, I was gonna let you know about my light bill. Yeah, I know I'm not gonna change anything, but I was gonna just put my adding the rain.
Well, don't say you're not gonna change. We want you to be hurried.
Yeah.
We want you to be heard. There's no real concern. We feel what you say.
I feel what you feel.
Yes, sir.
But anyway, I'm here to let you know that I'm having that little bit of problem.
Okay, y'all, y'all remain up there and let Mr. Harley answer.
Oh, you want me to answer for him?
And I'll get the microphone.
I copy you. So first of all, let me, let me respond to Ms. Jarvis's and, and Mr. Abraham's point on the cost of the lights. Let me dispel a greatly exaggerated myth. Your light bill does not go up based on the Christmas lights in the garden. So despite any other information to the contrary, it is never and has never been a part of the DPU bill. Let me get that out, out of the way. The city pays for that through hospitality and accommodations tax fund. So those are the taxes that are raised for people eating at restaurants and living in hotels. So they, the city pays for that as a separate thing. It is taxpayer money, but it's not from your, your DPU bill. Secondly, I, I do know that anything I say tonight is gonna be little help for paying the bill that you have coming forward. So I, I, I wanna let you know that I, I do sympathize with all of our situations because I think everybody in, in the building has had an increase. But your, your most recent increase is directly related to the cold weather that we've had. We have had, checking records right before I came, we've had, from December to January, temperatures have been 20% colder than they were last year this time. And so that will always be the driving factor. So we always tell people to keep your thermostat set on 68, and that will help you gauge any degree in the winter higher than seven. That 68 will add 7% to your bill. So the average person puts it on 73, that's a 35% increase on their, on your bill just by moving that thermostat up five degrees. Now, even if you leave it on 68, because the temperature drops, it will, your, your bill is gonna go up because your unit will come on. I'm probably one of the few people that can say my bill did not go up considerably because in the wintertime, I push my thermostat down to about 64 or 65. My wife, my wife does the same thing. She does not like that. But that, that is, now in the summertime, I push it down to 68, and last summer, my bill was $750 because I gotta have it cold. And, and so the, the only reason I say that is because I, I want you to know what impacts the bill. Not that it'll change what we do, but it impacts your bill. Every degree above 68 will add 7% to your bill. And then when you compound that with the cold temperatures, you can easily see how you can double your bill. And, and I've done it because I, I like it cold in the, in the, in the summertime. So those are the biggest variables that impact people's bills. When you add on, some of us, like I have an older home, the older homes, some of the windows, some of the door seals, I have to do some of that on a regular basis to make sure you're not losing heat. But if you come and sit down and talk with our staff, we can send someone out to your home and we can help you do a quick analysis of whether or not you're losing energy through any of those sources, like windows, doors, whether your house might benefit from being weatherized at some level. All those things are variables that go into driving the energy efficiency in your home. And then when you lay on top of the fact that most of us have heat pumps, and, and heat pumps are traditionally what we use in the south to heat and cool our home, they're really efficient until the temperatures get as cold as they have been in the last few weeks. And so you notice your, your unit will generally run a lot during that time. We have not increased our electric and gas rate that council does since last, last year. So that was not this last budget, but two budgets ago now. We, we, we did not have an increase. So there was no increase that council passed in this recent budget year. And, and we, we did so on water and wastewater. I did look at your, your usage and your usage, Mr. Abraham, and I'd be glad to talk to you about what we saw and have, you know, suggestions that we might recommend to, to, to help you mitigate some of the issues that you might be seeing. Again, the biggest drivers are, are the outside temperature and what you have your thermostat set on, on a regular basis.
So what these, how do you, how many days you say was the average that we saw as far as cold temperatures?
I just looked at December, the bills that you are, are, are seeing now, and you're gonna have one more big one. So December and January, remember, we pay, we pay in the rear. All our bills are paid in the rear.
So what do you mean by big one?
The, the cold temperature that we've seen cover December and January. So this week is really nice. And so most people will, will, will get a restful if the weather stays like this. You won't see those kind of bills come your next bill in, in, for the February bill. But, but your January and your December bill, which you've already seen your December bill, your January bill, and when I say January bill, that means the bills you're gonna be getting because you pay it after you use it. And so those bills are gonna be reflective of the low temperatures that we saw throughout January. I don't know the last time we've seen consistently freezing, frigid temperatures, ice on the road for several days. And, and that is what impacts our, our, our bills on a regular basis. We don't have to see that kind of weather.
Yes, sir. I understand that. And also, the other part, though, is what happens if, what, what are the resources outside of OKAB for those who, who don't qualify? I mean, because these bills are astronomical. I mean, they're just $900. Now, another situation that we had is that my brother-in-law was hospitalized from November through all the cold days. And he was home, he was not home at all. And his bill still was the same or more. He was in VA hospital from November, he wasn't even home for New Year's.
Yeah, I'd have to look at his usage.
It's no usage.
I always tell people, and so like, most people, well, I don't turn my unit off when I'm not home. I turn it down, but I don't turn it off, which means, again, with the temperature that we've had, if you left it on 68, it's gonna come on, come on whether you're home or not. So it will run. And, 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 you know, that, you know, that's just the, the function of the temperatures that we've seen. Again, I can, I'll be happy to talk with you about your, I can't do it in public, but I can certainly do that with you one-on-one to discuss some options for payment for people who have issues paying their bill. Of course, we have relationships with OKAB. Our custom service reps will often seek out some of the churches in the community that will help folks who need assistance. We also have Project The Neighbor Program that we use at, through CCMO. And then for folks who don't qualify for any of those area avenues of assistance, we do have payment options that we work with you to mitigate the, the one-time big payments that you might have. And so we, we, we do our very best. We understand that the person sitting across from us is not a bill. They're, they're a customer who is, is experiencing a difficult time perhaps. But we will work with you in any way possible to try to mitigate the cost that you might have to pay in one, one bill that you have.
Ms. Jarvis, are there any more questions?
Yeah, I was saying, I'm glad he give me one thing. All this, he tell me, he give me heads up on the next bill.
I've been doing that a lot.
I got a heads up, I won't be shocked when he come. I'd be happy to be a penny more. He give me heads up on that.
And, and, and again, I, I, I pulled my bill because I said, I know my bill went up. My, my, because my usage went down, my bill was a little lower than it was last year. Because I, I'm, I'm.
Because you're freezing. You're freezing. So, so, so fuck.
And, and I am not telling you guys to do that.
Well, I guess the concern.
Leave with the bill and, hey, work with it.
Yes, and, and I, I'll be happy, I have, yeah, I'm gonna give you guys my card.
You need to give out a lot of cards. Well, we appreciate that, but like I said, so in other words, in order for us to be comfortable, we can't be comfortable. If we wanna have a low bill, right?
I won't say I, I won't say my wife did that. I, I have some advice on that.
Well, I got to get more blankets. But like I said, it was, it was a shocker. It was a shocker. So we had to get some answers because, you know, it just, if, now, next month. No, not next month. We in February now.
Yeah, so, so your January bill.
I know the temperatures this week.
Yeah.
And next week.
So hopefully, we'll, we'll have a mild February, and then the bill you get from February and March, you, you hopefully that will.
They should be turned to normal.
Yeah, you should. And, and again, remember, your thermostat in the house and the temperature outside are those key driving factors. The only one that we can control is the one in the house. And so remember that. Every time you pump it up, you've added 7% to your bill. Keep that in mind. And, and, and I got some good friends of mine, they, they keep theirs on 75, 76. So that's a 50% bump in your bill if you are, if you are 75. And, and, and the temperature hadn't kicked in yet, you, you're gonna be easily doubling your bill.
Ms. Jarvis, I missed the.
Yes.
Now, this is a question, Mr. Harley. In your presentation, you, you covered some good items, educational. Could you speak to the hot water heater and to our ranking? If they were not in, I say Orangeburg County, if they were not in the DPU zone, they were in, I don't wanna call another company zone, but they was in the northern part of South Carolina. How would our rates compare to their rates?
Right.
And that hot water heater and our rates?
Good, 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 good point, Mr. Hannah. So, so City Council did raise water and wastewater rates this last budget year. So the, the year we in, we, we have higher water and wastewater rates. We did not adjust electric and gas, which most people are complaining about now. With that increase, we were still on a total bill. And we compare, when we say total bill, we compare people who, who are paying for all the services that we provide, although they may not be on the same bill. They, they pay for those services like in Columbia and, and other areas around us. We're still of the lowest in the state. With our rates, we, we were, the only place that was a little better than us was, I believe, Rock Hill. I don't have that in front of me. I think it was Rock Hill. But we, we were either the lowest or the second lowest in the state in our region for total utility bill or on the electric and, and gas. So we, we're still, and I know it doesn't ring true right now, you know, but we're still from a, a, a rate standpoint, one of the lowest you can get around this, this community.
And I still have one question. In reference to the, the increase on the gas bill that you have, how is the cubic usage measured? Because it's on here, thermes, the terminology thermes? Okay, right. And it went like from 2 to 80? And they said the usage, they use the term cubic feet used. How's that determined?
So, so that's just a unit of measure. We, I can show you, I can't do it, but I can get someone in our building group to, to do all, any. do all, any calculation you want on any of your services that you have. You, you have, you have gas, electric, and water and, and wastewater, I believe?
No, I don't have wastewater. We just have the water general, the outside city.
So water's done on cubic feet? And, and I, I do want to go back to Mr. Hannah's point. Sometimes if you have a, this is another variable, if you have an issue with, for instance, a water heater, it could run your, your, your water bill up and could be on and running more than it needs to be. And we can generally see that on our, on our, 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 our monitoring of, of, of everybody's bill. So we can see that and tell you whether there's something that's not normal about what's going on with your usage. And so we tell people to check your water heater, check, get, get an update or, or a yearly contract to have your heating and air system checked to make sure they're running efficiently. All of those things can throw your bill into a, a, a tailspin if they're not running efficiently.
Let Mr. Jarvis ask a question a sec.
I think that's it, I was just trying to, because, because I noticed my, the water bill, not, not wa, no, no, heat, the, the small general service, mine went from fourteen to one oh six. And they said it has something to do with the cubic feet used.
It's, it's your usage. So I, I don't know if you've had something change, and again, I don't want to get into your, your bill in public, but.
Yeah, just giving you, just.
Yeah, if you added something or, or started using, for instance, I have gas laws and I don't ever use them unless it gets as cold as it's been, so my, but I didn't use them this, this, this winter either.
So you just froze this minute?
I actually like it cold. No, I think my, my high bill's coming this summertime because I like it sixty-eight year round.
Okay, well, we appreciate the, the update, but like I said, we still.
Please call me, I, I, I do.
I do have it because we, it, it is excruciating, even though you have the explanation, it's still.
Ms. Jarvis, I want to say this to you, when people ask, please ask them to call DPU and ask for someone to come out there. We've gone out to people houses and they found out that the air's going out through the windows. It's, it, it, and, and they said their bill is hypothet, but the heat is seeping out of the house. So they turn their thermostat up. So ask somebody to come out there and, and, and assess. And that, that'll help them understand because people, you know, we want to, we want to answer these questions because they come up quite frequently.
They are.
And we don't want, we, we can't, we can't get around it because we are the custodians of, of DPU and we are, and, and we, we owe it to the public to answer these questions for them. And if they can ask for an assessment, Mr. Harley will send somebody out there because they've been called, people called, and he do send people out there to see what is it? And sometimes, sometimes they have leaks and they, and they, and the water is running and they don't even know it for a long time. And then, and it's so please, you know, as you go out, because I don't want them to go, it's the DPU, just the bill just so high, but ask somebody to come out and give them a scientific answer as to why their bill is so high.
And, and mayor, I want to say it again, the Christmas lights are not on your DPU bill.
Well, we hear that all the time, you know we pay for the lights.
I know.
But that's not true.
City and I have contemplated doing a new spot just to get that out there.
Ms. Greaves just want to say something.
Can you clarify the cost for that assessment?
There is no cost.
There's no cost for that?
So that's what we were.
Right, right, but people assume, I don't want to call, I don't want them to come out because it's gonna be a cost, it's gonna raise my bill. There's no cost.
And we may make that recommendation to those who had these increases outside the temperature, you know, so.
Well, no, so actually the best time to.
Do it is now?
Is this time of year because we do a thermal kind of shot of the house and we can see heat leaving the windows, doors or whatever.
Right.
Like the one we did last week, it was, the house was sealed, there was no, no loss. They were doing well. They just had a high bill. They just like it, they like it really high.
And just one other rumor that I wanted to spell as well, we pay the exact same bills.
Well, that's what I was asking, making sure, I didn't see your heads, no, so I thought you all had some perks.
No perks, no perks. The exact same resources are available to us.
Right, so you look like we did when we got out bills too.
Exact same thing, but I like it cold too.
Right, only him.
I was like Mr. Harley.
Yes, okay, we appreciate it, you know, we can at least, I'm sorry, thank you.
But I'm very thankful that you all came to talk and with us being, and it's being advertised, this helped a lot of people understand why it is so high. Because I knew that because of the way we move those thermostats, it makes a difference, but, and, and it, it has been cold. And we're not gonna sit there with no sixty-eight light. We gotta be warm.
We gotta be warm.
Thank you for coming in.
Okay, you quite well.
Go ahead, Mrs. John.
Yeah, I just want to ask one question. I live on two seventeen Madison Street, okay? And I have a problem with your wastewater thing. I know down in the low line there, and I, when the rain come up, the water push the sewage that comes down through the main line and it puts it, and come down on my property, you know what I'm saying? But I'm just saying that, is there any way that they can come, have somebody come in and widen the pipe out so when the, we have this rain season, that wouldn't pop the cover up and cause the raw sewage not to come out, you know what I'm saying? I, that's what, I had a couple of people to come to my job site from WSTV and I would tell them about the problem, what I thought caused the problem. And if you can fix that, I wouldn't have that raw sewage, you know, let's come through the pipe that would, you know, have a larger pipe so the water can run more freely and wouldn't pop the top off the cover that's running the raw sewage tube. And I was just wondering, if anybody can do something like that? Because I had a couple of WSTV showing the problem, y'all have come in there later and use lime to kill the odor and stuff because of this thing keep popping up every time the rain come up. And that's one thing, one thing I got to be thinking about there.
So, Mr. Abraham, that, that's something that, that I can talk with you about, that, if, if you're on City Sewer, that would be our group, so I can talk with you that, about that when you call and we talk about your, your light stuff.
Well, see, Mr. John, I told you we can help you with something.
What's your address again?
Two seventeen Madison. One thing, I like, I like, I like to be on TV and I was.
We, we want to keep you off TV. We want to keep you off TV. All right, well, thank y'all so much.
Thank you so much, we appreciate you, yes, sir.
I hope this helped you so much.
It does, it does.
And y'all come back anytime now.
Okay, but we'll come back just to see what's going on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. John, thank you, thank you, don't have to be on TV tonight. I want to thank y'all so much. We have, I think we have Mr. Harley coming for the new business.
I, I have, no, that'd be Mr. Everett.
I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Everett, I'm sorry, I was city administrator, sorry, Mr. Everett.
No worries. Good evening, Mayor and Council, I guess. Council, for your consideration, item number five is the resolution to provide for certain certifications regarding an abandoned building site located at or near seventeen oh one, seventeen oh five, seventeen eleven, and seventeen fifteen Russell Street. And what this is, is Orangeburg University District Partners, who are the developers for Railroad Corner, are asking for you all to pass this resolution because they are applying for abandoned building tax credits. And so basically what this resolution does is just certify that the buildings, that they are going to be redeveloping as a part of the Railroad Corner project were indeed abandoned. It is no adverse effect to the, to the city, we're not losing any property taxes or anything, it's just a certification that the buildings and property were abandoned. And in doing so, it'll help them in their application for abandoned building tax credits.
Okay.
I have to answer any questions?
This is right on Russell Street cross from Dollar General?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, well, we knew this was coming when we started the project.
Yes, sir.
Because that's why they stayed abandoned for so long.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, so we knew this was coming. Okay, in, in discussion on this, before I read this resolution? In discussion? Okay, to provide a certain certification regarding an abandoned building site located at our near, at or near seventeen oh one Russell Street, tax map number zero one one three one four zero four zero one two. Seventeen oh five Russell Street, tax map number zero one seven three one four zero four zero two seven. Seventeen eleven Russell Street, tax map number zero seven seven three fourteen zero four zero one one. And seventeen fifteen Russell Street, tax map number zero one seven three one four zero four zero one zero, Orangeburg, South Carolina, according to the South Carolina Code.
Annotated.
Annotated, section twelve dash six seven one hundred ETS EQ. We need to entertain a motion for this, please.
Mayor and Council, move for the adoption of certain certification recording regarding an abandoned building site located at all of those that Mayor read tax map.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kit.
Second motion.
Second by Councilman Kalu, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Everett.
Thank you, Council.
One, do we have any matters pertaining to Department of Public Utilities? They're gonna move you out tonight. Okay, we have executive session tonight, and in executive session, we're gonna discuss item six. Item six is discussion of negotiation incident proposed to contractual arrangements and or the receipt of legal advice, South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seventy dash A two Hillcrest lease agreement. Item number seven, we have performance evaluation discussion, Department of Public Utilities Manager, South Carolina Section Code, section thirty dash four dash seventy A one. We, we met before we entertain the motion, we may be coming back and we may not, we're not gonna say, but if you choose to wait to see, that's, that's on you, but we may not, I don't think we're coming back. But anyway, I'd like to entertain, entertain the motion.
I make a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Most, second by Councilman Greaves, all in favor?
Aha.
We're gonna say good night and thank y'all so much for being here.